Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAP City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. City of TAP council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at www.youtube.com/user/CityOfTaft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Public comments will be accepted up until five P M. The day of the meeting and all comments received shall be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Crier, followed by an invocation from Pastor Lloyd. So if you would all, please join us.
Please place your hand over your heart. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to apologize to the mayor. I broke the line getting in here. The cops almost arrested me. I want to say I'm sorry.
To you, sir.
I thought I'd be late and they let me through. And so if you see them, the police officers, tell them thank you. And I apologize, though.
No worries.
Well, Father, we want to thank you for the opportunity for the city to come together and the leadership in government to have a sound mind and wisdom. That's always, Father, when we ask you for it, you always give it to us liberally. I pray, Lord, for finances, that the city would be sound in finances, that there's issues that they need to do with, for example, projects that are short on, Lord. I pray you'd outpour blessing upon the city for the streets, for the improvements and all the things that the city council are trying to do. Father, I pray for our police officers. Thank God, Father, for them giving me a little bit of grace to pass through. But also, Lord, I pray for their safety. I pray, God, for the sheriff department, the city of TAF, that there would be a safety, an angel around each one of these officers and their families. May they be at peace when those officers go out. And for the fire department, those who serve our community, first responders of all sort, God, I pray your blessing upon them. I ask God you administer to the administration of Taft, the city, and all that they are required to do behind the scenes. I pray your blessing upon this meeting today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Crier.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaver is absent with notice.
All right. Thank you. First item on this evening's agenda is citizen requests public comments. Do we have anybody signed up? Nobody signed up for that? Okay. Thank you. Well, then, we're going to move right into council statements non-action. Councilman Crier, would you like to begin, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going into the holiday seasons and I just want everybody to be careful, do diligence, because there's a lot of people watching our homes right now that shouldn't be. They're looking at people being, having a set. When they leave for work, when they come home from work, so they go and they might want to take the presents that you want. But this be due diligence, and if you see something like that with your neighbors, help them out by calling the police to let them be alerted. I know there are a lot of activities going on in town. It's amazing how this town pulled together and supporting each other and making this holiday a great season to be part of our great city. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Waldrop.
Anybody's interested in getting their dog shot with a needle.
Thank you for calling.
Call this number seven six three one two one oh and find out what those dates are going to be coming up. That's all I got to say, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. It seems like we just started November yesterday. It turns out next week's Thanksgiving, so on behalf of everybody here, me and mine, happy Thanksgiving to everybody out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday. I'll tell the world. We all get together. We take time out. We take a deep breath. We have wonderful food. I like leftover turkey sandwiches, for the record, just laying that out there. And pumpkin pie as well. Lot of hugs, lot of family, very little pressure other than the cooks. But I hope that you all have the opportunity to spend time with family and friends and count your blessings along with all the good food. Enjoy it. And one of the blessings we have is we live right here in the city of Taft. I can tell you that just recently we had some events, and those events are fully dependent on volunteers. This community is so full of volunteers and the energy that goes into those things, whether it was Old Dorado, where we had a big event over at the community gardens, and I think there were some two hundred and thirty people signed up to volunteer to help out there. Young kids were there and they helped out, and their sweat equity was the opportunity to get a free bicycle and a helmet. And just a wonderful affair, and it looks beautiful. So to all of those of you in the city of Taft who have volunteered your time and your effort to help your fellow man, whether or not you even know who they are, thank you very much. That's what it's all about. So that's all I have. Next up, we have planning commission reports. Do we have planning commission report this evening?
Yes, sir.
You don't look like Jerry.
He looks different.
Looked like Jerry. No, we were asked to break it up a little bit, and I volunteered for this position. Sadly, also, I have to, supposed to run out of here and do some scouting with some kids.
It's not a bad thing. It's a good thing.
Chasing around, yeah. So the planning commission report. We want to thank you for approving Mr. Don Black. We swarmed in this last meeting. We had an opportunity to talk to the people from miniature golf right there in TAF. So new business is coming into town. We got it continued off till next month in December, twelve three. We went to the resolution about a new cellphone tower, right? Verizon's putting a new cellphone tower right behind City of the jail. And what else we got going on? The plan commission was adopted. That's all title stuff. All title stuff, yeah. So that's basically it, yeah. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And speaking of thank yous, I want to thank you and the members of your troop that were a part of the flag ceremony at our veterans' celebration.
That was a lot of fun.
So the young people did a really good job, and they were respectful of our flag and our veterans. So just want to give you my appreciation and be sure and let the troops know.
I will. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Cheers.
All right. Item number four, department reports. Do we have any department reports this evening? Seeing none. C manager statements. C manager Jones. All right. City attorney statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the statement.
Okay. Future agenda requests this evening.
I have one request. A lot of people know that the oil industry fortunately got passed through our legislature and the governor signed it to give our county two thousand permits every year for the next ten years. But not necessarily what they'll use up those two thousand permits every year, but the opportunity to. And that comes to about, if we used them all up, about one point five billion dollars a year, the potential permitting. Along with all that is the impact that will come to our county and to our great city for the housing. We might need more extra housing, restaurant opportunities, business opportunities, schools, taxes for fuel, motel taxes, occupancy tax. And we'd be prepared for it that's coming here. And it gives the idea, a guide for our citizens here in TAF and the businesses here in TAF, and also to bring us to bragging rights, to bring opportunities here to our city for come and invest in our town, because all these wells we have around here is opportunities for you to make some money from the oil companies and things. And I'd like to see us get like a study. What is the impact that going to have on our town and opportunities we're going to get from it? Not the negatives. I want the positives, which would be the good things for a town. If we're on the natives, well, maybe we might run out of motel spaces, maybe we run out of housing. But that'd be the negative, but it could be a good thing. But it opens up opportunities for them, for the building construction, to build more housing in our cities, maybe affordable housings in our city for the workers' housing. But I'd like to have, if we can do something, maybe next council, I mean, not to have a report or anything, but maybe to have a little discussion, possibly how we go about having a study. If we want to get the college involved with it. I know some speakers that would like to come and talk about what could possibly be coming into our town as far as opportunities. I love opportunities. And because a golden idea is that a lot of our graduations from our classes and stuff, they're leaving our town. There's now an opportunity with this Godsend from the, for the industry, for the permitting, to keep our kids here locally and get jobs here locally for them. So I think it's a win-win situation, but I'd like to see us look into that so that we have a little opportunity to see what's expected in our town, Mayor.
Okay, I will tell you, Councilman, I'm not sure exactly what resources we would bring to bear regarding that. And I'm heavily involved in the industry, and I know we're talking about Assembly Bill two thirty-seven, and I was involved in a lot of that. But Mayor Pro Tem, or Councilman, if you have some input regarding what Councilman Crier's talking about, help us out here.
The only thing I can think of, because I kind of feel very much the same way you both do. One, I understand what you're trying to do, Orch, where you're trying to kind of bring forth, these are the things that we need to be, a SWOT analysis. Like, these are the things that could come out of this that are positive. These are the things we need to be thinking of that could be potentially negative, or they could turn into a positive. I don't know how you turn that into a staff report, or if that's kind of what you're asking for.
Not going to be a staff report, no. Be a study. I think we're needing a study on this.
So to have somebody, us to commission an economic study of the impacts?
Well, we have different groups already. We have our.
EDC.
We got the current ED, you know, current Economic Development Corporation as one to help us out. But, you know, the state, we, the oil industry spent tens of millions of dollars to get this passed for them. And they spent sixty-five million dollars just for litigation fights they had. This is an opportunity. They spent all that money. Now, we just need to grab it. What can we do to take some of that to our city? What can we do to bring it here and for opportunities within our, with our council? But as far as purview for the business opportunities and potential business opportunities here.
Okay, I understand what you're talking about. Obviously, that's why we worked so hard to get, you know, Senate Bill two thirty-seven passed. I still am not clear on who we would reach out to to do the study that you have in mind.
I think we would reach out, like I said earlier, to the current Eaton, I'll make the development corporation.
KEDC.
Right. That'd be one avenue right there.
Okay, perhaps then a request would be that you could actually invite Richard Chapman or somebody from KEDC to come here and speak to the council? Would that be a first step?
That'd be one of the first steps, yes. I agree.
Okay. Well, I think we could extend that invitation, and I know Richard very well. I've spoken at several events that he's spoken at. So why don't we start with that? Why don't we start with, let's extend an invitation to Richard Chapman at KEDC to come speak to us, give us a brief presentation, if you would, based on the possibilities that come along with the possible issuance of two thousand drilling permits per year for ten year.
I'm sure they have something for the whole county that has segmented for our area or the west side, however you want to look at it. Because we've been members of KEDC, Kern County Development Corporation for a long time, but we're not getting a whole, we'd like to get some of our money back from them for what we've invested in the organization. Maybe they can help us out. As an opportunity to help us, and we can utilize them to give us some good information for the citizens here. They know what to expect. Because I know when they first start starting the drilling process here, I know they're going to drill one well and take out two abandoned wells out, I believe, at the Pfeiffer.
No, that was a proposal for counties outside of Kern County because they hadn't done a valley-wide E I R. So that was the rest of the state, so to speak, but that actually did not happen. So the, what happened was the state of California codified the Kern County Recirculated Revised E I R. So all of the stipulations made and the costs associated with drilling permits for Kern County through the Kern County E I R was codified by the state of California, which basically insulates them from litigation. But it doesn't actually release the opportunity to Kern County to start issuing those permits until after January the first.
That is correct. January first. It's coming up pretty quick.
It is indeed.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the average well goes about, what, three quarters of a million dollars on the average for, put a well in, on the average?
Yeah. I mean, you call that average. There's places up in, in the end of Crocker Springs where we set the top of the adapter at eighty-five feet and total depth was eight hundred feet. But then we drilled the Thunderball well at the intersection of the highway and midway road, and it went to twenty-six thousand feet. So there's a, there's a lot of different things going on there, but it will take some preparation. And it'll have to be placed in the budgets because it's capital expense. But obviously, getting it codified and getting it signed and getting the opportunity there was the very first big step.
I agree. And you know, the fire department affects them because all these wells going in, safety, and any potential accidents or whatever. You know, it's going to affect all our government organizations and stuff. But I think it's something that we need to look at because as a business and stuff and owners, there's been some tough times you've gone through. Now, my asking, good times coming our way. Just be prepared for it.
We hope certainly that it stimulates the activity, for sure. So why don't we do that? Why don't we plan on then? We will reach out to KEDC, Richard Chapman at KEDC, and extended invitation to come do a presentation, and we can take it from there.
And I would like to invite Les Quark to along with him, if that's possible.
I'm sure that's possible.
Yeah, because I spoke, I reached out to him, and he said he'd be happy to be part of the discourse.
Okay. All right. Very good then. So, Madam Clerk, do you have clear instructions regarding how we want to go about this? All right. Very good. And I know Richard as well, so I'd be happy to talk to him as well. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thanks, sir. Any additional agenda requests, gentlemen?
I'm just, this is my business, is all I, with, I can tell you how slow it is now. And I'm looking forward to those two thousand wells, hoping that my business will open up somewhat to where I can make a better living. It's just tough.
I think the discussion around the passage was there's probably been, from that point, at least two years before you start seeing some of those economic effects.
I understand, but we're going somewhere.
Sure. Sooner the better. I liken it to the fact that the state of California's, if you want to call it an energy policy, the state of California has no energy policy. And it was a high-speed rail headed off a cliff is what it was. And it wasn't until the announced closure of the second refinery, which then, you know, we're going to go from forty-some odd refineries during the days of Ronald Reagan down to nine. And the closure of the Valero refinery in Benicia and the Phillips sixty-six refinery is the loss of almost twenty percent of our refining capacity. So if all the other refineries continue to operate at a hundred percent, we will not be able to supply the state of California with all of the refined goods that it currently consumes. Okay, we're going downhill. And we're going downhill fast. So Senate Bill two thirty-seven, like you say, we slowed that train down. So you liken it to a train. It was headed off a cliff. We slowed it down. I think we stopped it before it went off the cliff, but we're right there. One more bad thing could happen, and we could still go off that cliff. And that's why the studies, independent studies have said that price of oil and gas, or gas and diesel fuel in the state of California could go beyond eight dollars a gallon. It's supply and demand, folks. That's what it is. And that is all on the backs of policy coming out of Sacramento. They created this nightmare, and now we are trying to stop it from going off the cliff. All right. Well, thanks. That was a worthwhile discussion, so thanks for getting that started. Okay, that's no more future agenda requests. Therefore, we're, made our way to the consent calendar, Consent Calendar Items seven through twelve. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent counter that, excuse me, any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none, those items are: Item number seven, which is the minutes of the October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five special Old Dorado Mayor's luncheon meeting and the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five regularly scheduled meeting. Item number eight, the payment of bills, some two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Item number nine, monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One, September two thousand and twenty-five. Recommendation is receive and file the monthly report for September two thousand and twenty-five from Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Item number ten is a resolution of the city council of the city of Taft authorizing bank card services. The recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing Bank Card Services" and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Item number eleven is the approval of street closures for the Christmas parade on December the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing the Street Closures for the Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Christmas Parade" and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Lastly, item number twelve is the allowed purchase of twelve Glock Model Twenty-two, forty-caliber semi-automatic duty pistols by sworn Taft police officers. Recommendation is a motion to approve the transfer and purchase of used firearms to Taft police officers as requested by the chief of police and find that the activity is not a project per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
On here. Oh.
You know, we have an esteemed guest and an expert on all things fire-related. So in order to get him to come up here and talk to us, I am going to remove item number nine from the consent calendar. Therefore, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items seven, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second? Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crier.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes. All right. Next up is item number nine, the monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One, September two thousand and twenty-five. C manager Jones, would you like to defer to the expert in the room?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can read it, but it pretty much says that.
You know what? I will say that just on, on looking at the numbers, we were talking briefly before the meeting started, that we're on a downward trend, excitedly, a downward trend in both number of COGS and number of fires, so.
That is correct, Mayor Nor. Kerry Wright, Kern County Fire Department, City Council, thank you for giving me this opportunity. So it has been a few months since I've been. So, it has been a few months since I've been here, due to fires and other activities, other commitments, but I do send a monthly report to City Manager Jones. And looking at the numbers for the last four months, you are correct, numbers have gone down. We're still looking, prior to the summer, we tend to see the calls incline, right? They tend to get a little busier as the weather gets better, there's more activity outside, and there just happens to be more 911 calls. Once we get to the summer, that's usually our peak, with July typically being a very busy month. As you can imagine, 4th of July is a very busy day.
Yeah.
Almost uncontrollable day. It's that bad. But as we've trickled down, we saw August drop down to, so we were around the low to mid 200 911 calls per month. August and September dropped down to 140, which is a pretty significant drop. Don't have any explanation as to why, but it did drop down. Then, back into October, we're back up to 170 call, 911 calls, with 13 of those being fires. So, a lot of fluctuation in there, but that's not uncommon. We don't, we don't look at month by month. I like to do this chart, I like to provide the chart, because you can look at it over the course of the year and really get a better idea of what's going on as opposed to just looking at a month-by-month basis.
As we look into the upcoming holiday season, there's a couple of things that strike me, and that's why I asked you to come forward, because you are the expert, and we want to hear about that, and that is, the homeless population moves indoors, and they're trying to find a place to stay warm, and they will burn whatever they can get their hands on to burn to stay warm. And we've had some real issues with that in the past. And then, secondly, with the holidays coming up, the Christmas tree in the living room drying out, so I really do, am I right in saying that that's, those, both those things are very real concerns, or have you not seen that really come to fruition?
No, that is, so, when the summer's around, right, and after the most recent amount of rain that we got, now my concern is less about vegetation fires.
Right.
Because of the moisture that we've recently received. But as we come into the holiday seasons, and you all mentioned it earlier about what a joyous time, we get our family together, but sometimes we lose sight of really what's going on, right? If somebody's deep frying a turkey, and then little kids walk by, and they don't do it correctly, and they put a frozen turkey inside of a deep fryer, and then all of a sudden, that oil comes out, and now you've got, you're rushing a young child to the hospital. That, we, nobody wants that, right? And then, as we roll into Christmas, if you do have a live tree, and you have any type of poor electrical, a lot of times, and I was a battalion chief out in Taft, so I ran a lot of these types of calls, where people are either borrowing electricity from their neighbor, or they're running not appropriate extension cords for the amount of amperage that they're actually using, and it creates heat. You get heat around a dry Christmas tree and around presents that are around there, or you have candles, because you want the house to smell good, but they're not sitting on something that's stable, and somebody bumps it over, and you start a fire, right? There's so many little things that can ruin your holiday, and we don't want to run those calls, trust us. Those are the last thing. It ruins the family's holiday, but it also ruins ours, right? Because then we have to go home and try to celebrate a holiday when we just ran somebody that lost theirs or lost a loved one. So, I ask you, please take a look, and please be careful during the Thanksgiving, the Christmas holidays, just do things right, right? Don't take shortcuts. If you have little kids running around, please make sure that there's a parent watching them. If you're distracted with cooking, or with presents being opened, or what have you, please make sure somebody is watching the little ones. That's, that's all. Any other questions from you?
You know what? There's one more thing. I just got to thinking about my own situation, and I will tell you this, and that is, for all the dads out there, moms do sometimes, but all the dads out there that are getting ready to put Christmas lights up, it's got to happen the day after Thanksgiving for me. Ladder safety has got to be a critical component of all of this, especially if your front yard's all soaked and moist, and one leg of the ladder gets going into the grass, so. And like you were just saying, and that's why I wanted you to get up here, and I really appreciate you doing that, because we get so wrapped up in the hustle and bustle and the joy of the holiday season, and we bypass very basic, very critical safety issues that could potentially ruin everybody's holiday. So, I appreciate you stepping up and reminding all of us to be diligent. And let's be safe, and let's enjoy it, make memories, let's not make mistakes.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, believe it or not, that brings us to a close, the open portion of this evening's city meet.
Did we vote on that last one?
Did we vote? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Thanks for that reminder. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to receive and file the monthly report for September 2025 for Kern County Fire Station Number 21, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines.
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Mayor Nor?
Yes, and I pass on a four-o vote. Once again, thank you for all that information. So, that brings the open session to a close. This council will be going into closed session for two items. Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of Section 54956.9D, one potential case. And item B, conference with real property negotiator Craig Jones, city manager, Government Code Section 54956.81 Undisclosed Parcel. Thank you all for being a part of this evening's meeting. Enjoy the Thanksgiving holiday. We'll look forward to seeing you after the holiday.